Order at seven PM. And for tonight, we're going to hear from a number of department heads regarding their fiscal year 26 budget. Before we do that, so tonight on the agenda, we have council on aging, the library, the collector, the auditor, the assessor, elections, and then planning and development is what we're looking at tonight. I sent out an email to everybody with this schedule and the proposed schedule for the budget. Does anybody, before we get into meeting with the department heads, does anybody have questions regarding the schedule? All right, hearing done, let's get started with the council on aging. Welcome.
Do I have permission to approach the bench, is that the right?
Yeah, please. And I believe it's on page 113 in the budget book.
Yes. And then if you're using the year-to-date budget report, it's page nine of our report.
All right, so welcome, and thank you also for going first. So just a couple of things, I think most of the budgets are pretty straightforward, but I do think it is useful to have a few minutes to come and talk to us and sort of talk about some of what was done last year, as well as some of like what the plans are for the upcoming year, and then what your concerns are with regards to the budget. Anything else you want to bring before us and talk about, so, all right, and welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here with everybody this evening and have an opportunity to talk about the council on aging, the accomplishments from this previous, or the current fiscal year, and what's going to happen in fiscal year 26. I want to start by thanking the council for approving the compensation study, the results of that, because it had a significant impact upon the council on aging specifically for of the full-time staff, and it really leveled the playing field and allowed us to recognize that we need a very talented team in order to meet the needs of a very diverse and growing older adult population in our city, which currently exceeds 11,000, and it's going to continue to grow. And for those in the room that are part of the baby boomer generation, those needs are and interests are very different than the silent generation. And we have worked very diligently on trying to expand the program offerings that we have at the council on aging, and have made some changes that you may be aware of, you may not, because of the parking challenges that we have. We've implemented a drive-through format and instituted a grab-and-go meal, so that people don't have to worry about parking. We know that socialization is key for our population, however, the numbers for the traditional congregate meal program were quite low, so we wanted to get creative in alternate opportunities. So we've partnered with Sturdy Hospital, and they are providing lunches at a nominal cost a couple of times a month. We have partnered with local assisted living facilities. We have a lunch and learn that we do with Bristol Aging and Wellness, formerly known as Bristol Elder Services. There are ASAP in this, in our area, and we have moved from brunch, or we will be moving from brunch on Fridays, to a preset menu, so that people can kind of come in and get what they'd like, parfait, yogurt parfaits and that kind of thing, so they can still come in and socialize on Fridays when we're open a half a day. So those things are happening. In terms of other programming opportunities that we've put into place, we receive grant funding for memory cafes that have been happening throughout the city, including the Attleboro Arts Museum, the Royal Museum, the zoo, and we're continuing with those animal encounters at the zoo. We've implemented Reiki, and soon chakra meditation will be added. So we're looking at holistic kinds of wellness programs to try and attract different types of older adults in our city, because that's a 50-year age span now that we're meeting the needs of and the interests, so those things are happening as well. We have finished our new three-year strategic plan, and happy to say the results of those have really been helpful in directing us for the next three years, and some of the changes that have happened because of that have to do with the programming. We will be doing a marketing plan. We've hired, thanks to your authorization, we've elevated the program former program assistant position to a marketing and events coordinator, and that will allow us to really raise the bar in getting the word out and educating people about what goes on at the council on aging, because we learned from many of the people in the focus groups that people are not aware of all that the council on aging does offer to taxpayers. And the other thing that I'd wanted to make note of was, we are keeping in line with last year and working closely with Mason of transitioning the part-time staff, four part-time staff and 50% of the marketing and events coordinator out of the general fund and to the formula fund grant that we receive through the state. So that's a, I don't want to say necessarily a cost savings, but it's transitioning approximately 90,000 out of the general fund to formula. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thank you. We'll go around the room, are there questions? And thank you for all of that. I have a couple of questions, but go ahead.
Would you like to say a word or two about the work-off program?
Sure. That's a great question, counselor. We have currently, in this fiscal year, 141 enrollees in the tax abatement program, and all of them, with the exception of two, currently have jobs, if you will, placements throughout the city. And Carolyn, who oversees that program, has worked very diligently with city departments in trying to find new opportunities, that it's not just the same ones that we've always done. We've really tried to expand that, and we'll continue to, and maybe we'll max out and then have to maybe ask for expansion, or not.
Other questions?
I can go absolutely last, but I do have.
I had a couple of quick questions, and.
Jonathan?
Yeah, Jonathan, go ahead.
Thanks, Kelly. Just a quick question, I know it's not a huge part of the budget, but I was just curious if there was any context or backstory to this. I noticed like a few of the utility line items sort of went down in terms of recommendations for this year, and I was just curious if either you or Mason could speak to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So some of the, some of the items, especially in like building maintenance, some of those were definitely like one-time repairs that were sort of unanticipated within the budget. So one of the things that's in the recommended versus the requested is more in line with the historicals. As you know, the last couple of years, we've been shifting, trying to shift costs from just a building maintenance line to more specific lines like elevator, HVAC, pest control, those items. So part of it was to, you know, part of it is actually kind of nailing down what those costs are as part of the broader effort to figure out what the citywide's costs are in those areas. In terms of, in terms of heating and lights and power, some of those revised versus actuals are, you know, again, that's kind of shifting currently, I believe that, like if you looked at the revised budget for heating, the actual amount expended through April was about 9,600. So we're kind of out of the heating season at this point, so, yeah, so.
Maybe not today.
Right, maybe not today, but we're out of the heating season at this point. So sometimes there's revisions within the budget where, you know, a department believes at the time in the winter that they might be tracking to exceed budget, and then ultimately, you know, once we kind of get towards the end of the season, that's not quite where they're at. Those costs are rising, so it's something to obviously monitor really closely as things develop within the fiscal year, as well at COA, you know, we've had difficulties around the HVAC system, so, you know, there's potential costs that could come up unanticipated. At this point, we think that will likely get this, get us there, not 100% sure. With lights and power, the only piece that we could potentially see a pretty significant increase is around AC in the summer. So right now, we're looking at a potential rental for about three months to fund air conditioning in the summer over there, to make sure we have a good working facility over there for the summer. We've recently done some quoting for that on the off-state bid list, and we're probably, we're likely going to send out a funding request shortly. Obviously, with, you know, full air conditioning, there could be, you know, potential higher costs for the lights and power, so that's something that, not really sure over the next few months, but the system that we're going to be using should be more cost-efficient. So it's kind of, hopefully it's, it'll get us there, and I can't, you know, I can't say if it will or not at this time.
Counselor Holmes.
Thank you. I read what you wrote about Shine, is there any reason to believe that we could lose the funding for that?
Yeah, so I think this is probably the big conversation before the council, and so I appreciate you asking. So we tried to be pretty clear in the budget from the administration's perspective what Shine is, so that everyone's aware, I mean, it's, Shine is a program that's been housed in the city of Attleboro since 1986. The program is not an Attleboro program. It serves Attleboro residents, but it also serves residents for the entire county. So it's the, you know, the serving, the serving the needs of everyone program in Attleboro, but it actually is for the county. So we're the county, we're the, it's a state and federally funded program that we are sort of the district office for. Working with Kelly, we've determined about 35% of the actual service provided by the Shine program is to Attleboro residents, with the remainder being other member communities of Bristol County. Right now, we have a contract with Shine through the state that ends on June 30th. We've reached out trying to get the renewal, because we have options to renew over the next year, haven't really heard anything, they've been pretty unresponsive, been very difficult to deal with over the last year. I think Deb can probably speak to the administrative difficulties of the Shine program. I believe at this point, there's, their funding is extremely up in the air. So one thing we did get back, I believe, today, was it yesterday or today? Yesterday, was they sent us a potential renewal, and the renewal was for $16,000 between July 1st and March 31st. That's the first thing we've really received related to fiscal year 26. $16,000 is 10% of the cost of the program. So at this point, it's unclear if, you know, the Shine program, the Bristol County Shine program is going to be able to be funded within the city of Attleboro. What the administration would look to do is continue to serve the Shine needs of Attleboro residents through other means. Luckily, we have formula funds and available funds to potentially hire an additional part-time person to serve our residents, but what the city can't be doing is taking on the cost burden of serving Bristol County residents on the Attleboro taxpayer and the Attleboro budget. So it's definitely a complicated situation, but I think it, you know, it's not in the, I would argue that it's not in the best interest of the city for our resources to serve other community residents. We'll continue to serve our residents and try to be creative in how we do that, ensure those needs are supported, but there's a potential that on July 1st, you know, we don't even have a contract in place, so it ends on June 30th. So that's kind of the circumstance right now. To give an idea of the way Shine works, if you're in North Attleboro and you go to the town and you ask for support with Shine, they send you over to Attleboro, right? So what we would be looking to do, if there is no existing county program in Attleboro on July 1st, is we'd be looking to be the place where people come in Attleboro, you know, to support Attleboro residents, and if someone comes from another community, we'd point them towards the new district office or towards their community, just to ensure that, you know, our resources aren't going towards other communities. I'm sure there's follow-up questions on that.
Thank you. You kind of answered it, I was wondering if it was more so from the state budget side, but do you have a figure on what we would spend on if we were just serving Attleboro residents? I mean, from my math, I think maybe roughly like 56,000 or so, based on the 10% figure you gave.
That's probably high. So we have a Shine counselor that's funded through CBDG funds in the city, and they serve strictly Attleboro residents. We've kind of looked at what we think we might need to take on the additional side of the additional role, a lot of it's done through volunteer counselors, by the way, but the additional kind of cost, we think we may be able to get away with a 10, 15-hour part-time position as a Shine counselor, so in addition to that one part-time position, we've already sort of been funding through CBDG funds. You know, at this point, I definitely wouldn't say at that cost level, but there's also potential options for our current council counselors to go through training, which I believe is ongoing, we're not, you know, it's not fully built out yet, but potentially our existing staff to also support some of those needs. But I wouldn't say it's that high, I would say you'd be looking at a part-time, you know, maybe 10, 15-hour position, but I think it's something we just, if we, if we had to go that direction, we'd just monitor really closely. The other pieces, a lot of it's seasonal, so around the open enrollment period, so that might be a time where, you know, you try to look to have additional counseling staff around those periods, because that's really when the bulk of the work for Shine happens, is that fair to say?
Yes, it is.
So that's probably another course of action, but I don't think 50,000, I think we could be looking at 20 to 30.
All right, and we're running out of time.
Just one thought I had is, have you considered reaching out to other communities to see if they will fund what we're in fact doing, so that maybe North Attleboro would pay us to continue to advise its residents if they come to us?
Haven't done that, this is a pretty, it's a developing situation, you know, haven't really gotten a good response from the state, but definitely haven't gone through that exercise. I mean, ultimately, the city's, the city's been operating the Bristol County office for four decades. I don't know, I mean, I guess that may be an intermunicipal agreement if there was even an opportunity for something like that, but, you know, again, it's a, it is a state federally funded program.
Well, I understand, but in a month, if it's over.
There may be opportunities for regionalization, for sure, but more on the onus of the member communities rather than the state and feds, that's definitely something to explore. It has not been discussed.
Thank you, thank you.
And so a couple, well, first of all, Counselor Tavarez, thank you for asking the question about the lights and power, that was on my list. And then the other thing is, looking at the overall budget, it looks like it's increased by 10%, and the bulk of that is in salary and wages. I'm showing 411K requested, 382,000 is what was approved for salary and wages, and then you had mentioned 90,000 coming out of the general fund for grant funding for that additional position. So it does look like it's a, the biggest jump here was in salary and wages, can you talk a little bit to that? And where 411 was requested and 382 was provided, is that, is there going to be a shortage?
Yeah, so to Kelly's point, the compensation plan had a significant impact for the COA. Those were a lot of the positions that were identified as being underpaid in those full-time roles. I think Kelly kind of highlighted the, highlighted the, you know, ability to have a strong workforce, and so the change from '25 to '26 is largely driven by that. The, last year, we had shifted all part-time positions to grant funds, whether it be formula or the other grant funded positions with Shine. The difference between the requested and the recommended is Kelly's request was funding 100% of her full-time staff on the general fund. The recommendation from the administration was to continue, similar to what we did with the program coordinator last year, was with the marketing events coordinator, fund it 50/50, and over time, work to sort of shift more of that cost to the general fund, but try to take it on incrementally. The formula funds, we have a significant amount of formula funds in. formula funds, we have a significant amount of formula funds in the city right now that we're trying to actively, you know, use more proactively. And there is, formula right now, I believe, is in place till twenty-thirty-two, and it's driven by, you know, the state pretty much increases every year based on if they increase the amount per older adult in the city, as well as, you know, we've had an increasing older adult population. So, our sort of allowance, or, you know, for lack of better words, has kind of increased pretty much every year. And we're still, I believe, and this year, we're still spending down FY twenty-three funds. Don't quote me on that, but I believe we're still using prior-year funds before we really get into some of the new funds that have come into the city in the last year.
Perfect, thank you.
Most of my concerns, most of the counselors ask the question, so, we better get on it. I do, Kelly, is it accurate to say that the significant increase influx of money for lights and power, though, was directly related to one of the electrical problems at your facility last year, the eight thousand that came in?
Because of the malfunctioning of the HVAC units that are twenty and thirty years old, that was drawing more electricity, and it just blew our costs out of the water with electric.
So, the FY twenty-five cost, Counsel Tavares, is unusually high directly related to that, we think, right? So, that one, I think they covered, but that's a key component to that. Everything else was covered. I was particularly concerned about Shine, and Counsel Holmes brought that up, and I think everybody's aware of it. I'm sure there's lots more to come on that particular topic. I can tell you, as a grant, and the information that my office does receive from the state, it has at times proven to be one of the biggest challenges, yeah, just getting information timely. I don't know if that's because it's a federally funded grant through the state or what, but it is particularly challenging. The other thing just to keep in mind, regardless of where an employee of the city of Attleboro is funded from, potentially, if this grant goes away in the short term, near term, whatever phrase you want to use, there are potential costs that the city will incur because the city is self-funded for unemployment. So, if the jobs go away, we take on that liability, we take on potentially other liability as well. If they're full-time employees that are benefit-eligible for other things, including retirement, that's a cost to the city. So, whenever an IMA is considered with other communities, those costs are things we should definitely consider long-term. Is it something that the community, Attleboro in this case, wants to take on administrative costs, you know, long-term retirement costs and that kind of stuff, post-employment benefit costs? So, there's a lot that goes into it, and I'm sure this conversation is just starting, so.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, at a minimum, you know, the forty years that the city's kind of operated the Bristol County district office, the city has taken on costs for, on behalf of other members of the county, to support this program, not just administrative costs, but we take on, by housing this program, we take on significant liability as well. So, regardless of whether or not, you know, they do get their act together and have the funding in place and have a renewal, there is still a cost to the city, and the administrative side is pretty significant. But also, there's outstanding liabilities pretty much at all times that a program's operating here. So, it's just something, you know, it's definitely something to keep in mind.
Outstanding. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Kelly?
Yeah, excellent job. Next up, we have the library and...
Maybe?
And I believe it's on page seventeen.
One twenty-one.
Oh, is that what I wrote?
One twenty-one, actually.
Thank you.
We have one twenty-one down.
So, what's going on with your budget?
What's new with the library?
Yeah, what's new with the library?
The library's going fantastic, getting ready for summer reading, did a level service budget. There is one, the biggest change is where, after three years with no public printing, we've gotten a lease with Conaca Manolka for printer-scanner fax for the public. So, we're pretty excited about that. It is an expense of just over six thousand dollars. It's a five-year lease, but the city will be getting the income for that, right? The public pays for all of that printing. So, there'll be a, we don't know exactly what the income will be, but there will be some. Everything will be priced accordingly.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Do we want to talk about the salary and wages part-time?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the library has a significant number of the employees at the library are part-time employees. They're still a union-represented group, but they're part-time employees. The, historically, we funded those part-time positions out of the full-time salary line. You can imagine that doesn't really necessarily make sense when you have a part-time wages and a full-time wages line. So, it's mostly just an administrative correction, shifting those salaries out. You'll see the one-to-one basis on the salary sheet, but just for better, you know, financial management, accounting purposes, it makes sense to have those budgeted in a separate line item. So, that's, so essentially, that, you see that big difference between the requested and recommended. It's basically a net offset between what was shifted down to the part-time.
That makes sense. And overall, the total budget increased by three percent. Other questions from Counsel? Counsel Holmes.
Thank you. I know that we're preparing to be closed, right, for the month, and so how, I guess, will that impact about the...
Question.
Depending on what staff decide to do for that time, I have a significant amount of the staff who want to use vacation time during the month of December. There are a few part-time people who think that they may just work unpaid at that, so it will go down a little. But, you know, our, we don't lose income necessarily because we're not open. There was some concern, I think I spoke about it last month, that, you know, that customers wouldn't come back, but we are by far the biggest library in the area. We're the most-used library in the area. When we were doing statistics for the, in potential federal cuts to the Institute of Museum and Library Services, it was brought up that, our library. So, ILL is borrowing items from libraries outside of the sales network, so across the state, across the country. Attleboro is the number-one user of that service, which is paid with federal money, with eight hundred items a year, the top user. The second user, the second top user, is four hundred items a year. So, there's a four-hundred-item-a-year jump, which we, and I realize that I'm patting our team on the back, but we're an awesome library. We're very well-used by members of the surrounding community. I have no qualms about people coming back, and they're going to want to see the beautiful building.
Another question, Counsel Tavares.
So, similar question on this one, a couple of line items kind of drew my attention, building maintenance, HVAC service, and elevator, and some of those are going, you know, in different directions. So, I was just curious if you could speak to that.
Specifically with regards to building maintenance, there's a lot left over currently in that account, and so, questions, is there anything there? Are we doing things differently?
I'll start, if you want to. It's an old building, for maintenance, you guys see that all the time. So, some years, we use it all and then ask for more, and some years, we don't use it all. You know, there was a cut to the elevator account. We had a year recently where we were spending a ton of money on, because it kept going out of service because of power. We had a lot of power outages that year, and it cost us a lot of money. We did separate a lot of our building maintenance into the various accounts, HVAC and plumbing and different things, so that, there's always that sort of bit that's wiggle room, because we don't know whether it will be plumbing or electric, or, if there was a huge problem, we will let you know.
Specifically on maintenance of buildings, you can see the original budget was, I believe is eighty-six hundred, right? A lot of that was transferred out to HVAC services, elevator. It was transferred to some of those other accounts, so that's still an ongoing piece. Like, you know, we have an overall building maintenance line, but then, you know, if they're for some of those specific expenses that aren't just in the broad category of building maintenance, but HVAC or elevator or sprinklers, some of these, you know, these that we've really broken out, a lot of times departments are transferring into those to cover those expenses. So, over time, we're trying to get more nailed down on what those specific expenses are on an annual basis. But sometimes, you know, different things come up, right? We've had some HVAC issues, we've, you know, we've had some ongoing, ongoing things. So, each year can be a little bit different on what the big, the big items within the maintenance is.
Sounds good. Anybody else?
So, just two things for clarification, and just so that I understand, and maybe other folks do too. The library will be closed, but are you going to be hosting programs elsewhere in the city?
Yes.
Right, so there are still going to be library programming in other places?
Yes.
And then the second question I have, is there a negative impact, or is it just doesn't impact the state aid numbers that would be in the following year because of the closure? So, unless I'm mistaken, state aid, there's a component of state aid that's related to the number of hours that the library is open?
Yes.
Will there be an impact because of the closure in December on that?
There is typically an understanding of construction projects and sort of things outside of your control, that there's usually a waiver or an understanding. You just have to write up an explanation of it.
Okay, so, it's not likely?
Yeah, it's unlikely that we will have an impact. But you do bring up a good point. Like, we say that, I say this every year, we are not open, the Attleboro library is not open enough hours to qualify for the minimum level, the minimum funding for a city of our population. We do this every year, right? We're open fifty-nine hours, and we're supposed to be open sixty-two hours for a city of this size, so we do get docked twelve percent for not being open that. But that's for state aid, separate.
Counsel Waterman.
Yeah.
So, you have a increase in security, even though it's still not large, and I'm curious, not just why the increase, but what are the security issues at this point?
For the monitoring, that's, yeah, it's not, it's not the security guards.
Okay.
Do you have a written idea?
I think what Counsel Waterman's asking, that is the security services, which are those guards that are, it was a little bit of a contractual increase, and that's been an ongoing, that you guys have been using them throughout the year, right?
Yes. The other thing about the security guards is that we budget for the entire, you know, fifty-two weeks, three days a week, but they do not get paid on the weeks that there's a holiday on the month. If the holiday falls on one of the days, the security guards are there, so it will actually be a little bit less than what is in this budget.
Counsel LeVoy.
Thank you, Chair Kovis. Could you just speak to what the numerical number would be on that twelve percent of state funding that's lost?
Uh, yeah.
It's not very significant.
Maybe fourteen?
Yeah, it's, the amount of, like, state aid is what, I mean, around approaching a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty?
This year, it was around a hundred thousand that we got in state aid. Four years ago, it was fifty-two thousand dollars. There's a whole formula that goes into it, and it is based on use of the library. It's based on how many folks from outside of Attleboro have an Attleboro library card. Like, there's different perks. All of the cards are good in the network, but you get different perks depending on which city or towns card you have.
Counsel, I think what you're asking is, is opening for three additional hours actually result in a net benefit cost-wise, and I think the answer would be no, just in terms of the cost of being open that much longer.
Yeah, even, I mean, even if the margin's close, it seems like maybe three more hours might just be beneficial to Attleboro.
It's a significant difference to be open three hours additional per week versus fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars in additional state aid.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, should we be encouraging everyone to get library cards to help with state aid?
Yes, always.
Okay, got it.
Just in general, right?
Yes.
Any other questions? Here and now, thank you so much, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Next up is the collector in Zeta, in page fifty-five.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah. And I apologize for the item that we need to push through the council.
Yes, all good. It happens.
Things happen.
But aside from that, how is, how's everything look with the budget?
Well, my budget's pretty much the same every year.
Yeah.
My biggest issue is the postage.
Right.
It's been sixty-six thousand for the last six years, and the cost keeps on going up. And even though I saved quite a bit by going with my billing, billing just twice a year versus the four times, the postage cost still goes up, and my Calian Ryan still went up by over four thousand this year. So, my, the savings were still nine thousand, but it's still not enough for what I get budgeted for. The sixty-six thousand does not cover.
Okay.
Yeah, I did all my, so my budget for twenty-twenty-four was a little over ninety thousand, and this year is eighty-two thousand, and that's to carry me to bill the FY twenty-six first and second real estate tax bills. So, when you look at eighty-two versus the sixty-six that I'm budgeted for, it's like every year, moving money around and asking for money to be able to make ends meet, yes.
So, we, we're only budgeting for sixty-six thousand, but this year, it's with the additional money that we need to...
Get the twenty-two.
I think at the time, we thought we'd be, with the savings of the, the way we're doing the billing now, I think we'd about, I thought we'd be a little bit closer to that sixty-six. There will be some savings from the printing and reproduction line.
Yes.
So, some of that's always funded through those internal transfers. So, there will be some savings there that'll be able to offset the postage increases. But at this point, I think, seeing where things have gone the last month, I think we're likely going to be short on that account, and we will probably need to come back for additional funding in the spring.
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, over the next couple of years, we can kind of incrementally adjust that. Also, the postage rates are going up, so I believe we have an additional increase in, I think it's like July fifteenth. So, I think we're, unfortunately, I do think we're going to be short there, and we'll probably be coming back for additional funding in the spring.
Okay. And I think it's useful to have these conversations, and that way, it's not a surprise to us when it happens. Counsel Dolan.
Thank you. Is there any move or thought of digital payments for tax bills and...
I hadn't really discussed it, but I think the law allows, the law, the tax bill has to be mailed to the homeowner regardless. If I offer electronic bills or not, so the electronic bill would only be a convenience. The bill would still have to be mailed to the homeowner.
Interesting. I don't think I ever knew that. All right, thank you.
I didn't either. Good question.
I didn't know that.
Any other question? Counsel Tavares.
So, while not directly related to any of these line items and specifically postage, I'm just curious, how has the outcome been or the response in terms of your office by billing biannually as opposed to quarterly for tax bills?
The first quarter, I have to say, was pretty tough. We got a lot of phone calls and a lot of confused taxpayers, but I think overall, it's been pretty smooth. I do have, I used the science for the, from the water department and the waste, the public works, to kind of advertise when the taxes are due for the second, the second half, since they're not getting a bill, and that seems to be working fine. I mean, I don't really see a change in the money coming in.
Yeah, that was the main question. That's good.
So, I appreciate the efforts of sending out the bills in the semi-annual process. It's a small savings overall, but it is a savings. I know that postage continues to climb. As a percentage of the bills that are sent out, approximately, what percentage is paid for real estate from escrow companies, like the... companies, like the, the major, like seventy percent-ish?
Maybe six, sixty-five to seventy percent, probably, yeah.
So most of the, uh, you know, so everybody's getting the mailing, and everybody has to get the notice and all of that other stuff, but realistically, the escrow companies are paying a significant portion. And just because we're probably televised, if you're, if you're responsible for paying, and you opt to pay online with Unibank, which is an option, there's also now an option on the Unibank platform to ask for, um, electronic reminders, I believe. So, just to put it out there, so that people know, like, you know, y- you can also help remind yourself by opting into those programs and platforms that are, are available. Um, I, I believe I understood what you said and agree with the mailing of the real estate bills. I'm just curious, do you know if utility bills have an exemption that they could, that a person could opt into?
Yeah, the, the utility bills are not, and I would have to look into it, if I'm really.
I think it's something that, um, could be explored, um, to your question, Councilwoman, but, I mean, I don't know that we are presently in a position with the technology that we have to do that as well, because we do a lot of internal mailings and billings.
Are there any other comments? Say that, are there any other concerns aside from the postage with, uh, with this budget?
No, I mean, it's not, no other issues, no.
Outstanding. Well, thank you for, for coming and.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, um.
Hi. Do you want me to go over there? Or stay here? It's up to you. It's up to you.
She doesn't want to sit next to you.
Uh, do you mind going over there?
I don't mind.
Is that, no, we don't all have to turn around?
Yeah, no, no, no problems. We'll just bring them over.
Oh, how nice.
And we are, uh. Page forty-one.
Hello.
Hey, Jeff, any questions about your budget?
I don't have any questions. Let me, well, you know what, it's the page that Mason provided without my notes. Um, so included in the request for this year is, um, it's not an interim update for the actuarial, which is why you'll see the increased cost from, um, the revised budget in two thousand and twenty-five, which is six thousand dollars. The request in two thousand and sixteen is for the ten thousand five hundred. Um, that's based on the estimate from the actuarial firm to do a, a full post-employment benefit actuarial update. Um, staff development, um, it's a pretty sizable amount. I recognize that. Um, I want you to know that we do avail ourselves of the training. Many of you know that the long-term employee that was in my office for, uh, the better part of twenty years left in December. I have a new assistant city auditor, um, will go to, um, all sorts of trainings. I go to.
Does that account for the longevity decrease?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, uh, the longevity de- decrease is directly related to that. The changes in the salary are directly related to changes in personnel and the comp plan. There is no, uh, part-time salary request because, um, Liz was, uh, staying in the office in a part-time position, um, during fiscal twenty-five and left mid-year. Um, so that's why there's nothing in there for that. Um.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I don't mind at all. It's, it's perfectly okay. Um, so we're presently a staff of five. Uh, four of the five will be receiving longevity this year. Four of the five are somewhat long-term employees. Prior to Mike coming on board, the last person that had joined the staff was, um, ten years ago. Um, there's great benefits to having a long stand, longstanding-serving colleagues in your office. Um, and then there is, um, some downside to that, right? Um, one of the benefits to having Mike join us, you know, fresh, fresh perspective on some things, able to look at some stuff. Um, he's got a lot of, uh, positive attributes in the technology, but hasn't gone through a municipal financial cycle, so part of my, um, goal for twenty-twenty-six is really to, uh, show him, teach him as much as I possibly can on the nuances of Massachusetts municipal finance, and we're working through that. The training is particularly, I think, important for not only Mike to participate in. I continue to do that myself, and, uh, Kim in my office will continue to do that training. So I do recognize it, it's a lot of money for a small department. I can tell you the training is invaluable, and in the years that, um, nobody from the city participated in training, that was that important. There were some really significant consequences to that, that involved not just a department, but the city as a whole, right? So when the Department of Revenue makes changes, we learn about those changes at some of the trainings that we go to. Um, some big changes ahead for twenty-twenty-six, as far as the audit, uh, the office itself, Tyler, uh, has the implementation of TCM, which is Tyler Content Management, um, sort of finished about three weeks ago, um, through the backend on UNIS, so we've started to really kind of roll that out on a smaller scale within our department and some of the, uh, other related departments that we deal with daily, and those things will, will start to decentralize some stuff and move across the city slowly to, um, hopefully improve some efficiencies, change some processes, and bring us closer to the twenty-first century than we presently are. Um, unfortunately, all of those things take a lot of time on top of the already stretched resources that we have. So, um, we're hopeful, and we'll, we'll get there. And that's, that's what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
Before we get into too much, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for, um, for all of your work while, while Mason was, was away. Um, I know that was a challenging, challenging time, so.
Thank you. It wasn't just me. There were lots of people that helped. I appreciate that, but, yeah. We're happy that he has returned.
Of course. Uh, are there any other questions? Are there, do you have cons- any concerns? I, it's a, was a, a six, no, five percent increase, um, overall. It looks pretty straightforward. Um.
I always have concerns about everything, but as far as my budget goes, what I requested is here. Um, if there's additional training opportunities, I might have to come back in the future for that. I think this budget is funded for the things I know about. Um, there's three sessions a year for the accounting type thing that I would expect as many people in my office to participate in, um, as possible. Um, Mason and I had a meeting as recently as today about some of the technology upgrades that we might need to ask for some additional money for. I'm not sure if he's going to send that down in twenty-five. I think he might, or if it would be in twenty-six. A diff- additional small hardware things that will help, um, improve some of the essential things that will happen. Um, it's, it, it has been a difficult year because with, um, change, which is, it's fine, right? But it's just, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot to teach people when it comes to the, um, nuances of Massachusetts municipal finance. I've often said that I would expect a brand-new clerical person that works in an administrative capacity with the city, it would, I think, take them a good solid eighteen months to kind of really learn what the process is. You add the expectation on top of that of somebody that's middle management or upper management, and that's, that's a lift, you know, in the first eighteen months that somebody joins us here. Um, if they come from the private sector, it's a little bit more difficult, depending on their background. If they come from another municipality, there's still challenges because some things are unique to a city as opposed to a town, and then within a city, some things are unique to the city of Attleboro as opposed to another community. Um, one of the other goals that President Delisi and I have met on multiple times, specific because as part of the comp plan, right, each person that's in the comp plan has to set goals and stuff like that, so he and I have been collaborating on those specific to me, um, are like, how can we best, um, move forward and memorialize documentation guidelines, be, um, better in that role in particular, so that when I leave, somebody can step in with greater ease and have the, the documents there so that they know how to proceed. I've been here a long time, and what's really, um, more obvious to me today than it has been in the past is just how much I have in my head and isn't written down, and working with Mike, right? I ha- when I have to explain or show something to somebody new, you know, he takes copious notes, and he's great at that, and, uh, we've worked together to develop some new forms and requirements, um, in that regard, that not only will impact how we operate on the city side of some things, but we're working with, um, administrative staff at the school to branch that out and some of that stuff. Because I sign, I sign a significant amount of documents for the school, purchase orders, all the warrants, um, the contracts, all the reimbursements and stuff, so it's not isolated to just the city side. The accounting office and the auditor's office works closely with the entire school department, too.
Perfect. And you have to babysit us city councilors and explain to me why something's transferring through four different accounts, five different accounts to pay for fireworks.
So I know, sometimes that is a lift, but, um, that is just so that people can trace everything easily. Those outside auditors, they're more best than me.
Perfect. Outstanding. Any other questions, comments? Hereina, thank you so much.
I'm gonna go back to my corner.
All right, next up, we have the assessor, Julie.
I think we, uh, should have elections, right? We had that schedule change. I'm sorry. Should be elections.
Oh, election. I'm sorry.
Get your steps in, please.
Sure. Yeah, page sixty-five.
Hey, we're ahead of schedule. It's pretty good.
Yeah. All right, whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening. So the budget I'm presenting for fiscal twenty-six is about thirty-seven thousand less than last year, um, due in part, apples to apples, it's still two elections. We have two municipal elections versus two state elections. So last year, we had to staff early voting for a total of three weeks in fiscal twenty-five, so that was about seventeen thousand dollars. Um, in addition to that, I had budgeted about twenty thousand dollars for advanced processing. That is when we bring poll workers in to open up the early ballots, to deposit the early ballots. What I ended up doing with that, um, because I have two very capable clerks and a new high-speed tabulator, they were able to themselves do all of the depositing of, over the course of a week. So instead of paying eight people to work a whole week, they were working anyway. So we saved a great deal of money that way. Um, additionally, I utilized, uh, volunteers from the COA, Attleboro Enterprises, and the high school, and they did all of our signature checking and our filing, um, saved us thousands of dollars. So I'm gonna keep doing that. Um, so that is bringing that part of the budget, the salaries election account, is about twenty thousand dollars less than last year? Yeah, so, um, gonna keep doing that, and, and it's actually fifty-eight thousand dollars for the salaries election account, the lowest it's been since FY nineteen. So it's been seven years since it's been that low. Um, so I'm gonna keep using volunteers for what I can use volunteers for. My clerks will keep doing the depositing, and we're gonna keep it tight. Um, other than that, everything else is pretty much in line. The salaries account is up because of my compensation change last year. Um, the overtime is down, uh, we don't have any longevity. Our maintenance contracts went up a little bit, but everything else is pretty much in line.
Professional services?
Um, professional services, um, so that. Uh, let's see, so in a municipal election year, we have to pay to print the ballots, which is about ten thousand dollars per election. So that's, that's the big increase in that. Um, and then we also have to pay for memory card coding, um, which we don't have to pay for. The state pays for that in state election years.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so, so it'll ebb and flow. A state election year, you'll have early voting, and a municipal election year, then we have to pay for the ballot. So it's like a, a bit of a juggle.
That makes sense.
But ultimately, you know, I tried to cut down everything as much as possible to as low as possible to still be functioning as well as possible, and.
Yeah, ten percent decrease overall.
Yeah, uh, most of it is the poll workers' account. Like I said, it really, we end up saving money by having two full-time employees, because what they always did in the past is they would pay poll workers to do the, to work. We would bring in just lots of people, like, I think it was two teams of four were doing the, the pre-depositing work ahead of every election, and my clerks are being paid. They're already here, they're doing it. So, um, saving a lot of money that way.
I think in the, um, if I may, in that graph, you can kind of visualize it pretty nicely. You see the difference in personnel services between twenty-three and twenty-four, and then twenty-five and twenty-six. That's really the big driver. In those off, those off-election years, it, it, it changes. This is one of those few budgets in the city where you actually have a significant swing every other year. So next year will probably look more like FY twenty-five.
A little bit more, but, but like I said, I, I had gone on historical data when I budgeted the FY twenty-five salaries election account last year, and they had always had teams of people coming in to do the work, where I used the volunteers and then my own staff. So I think even next year, it being a state election year, it's going to be significantly lower than last year's budget.
That's just good management.
Yes, and it really is impressive.
Good steward of taxpayer money.
Outstanding.
Yeah, and just, just a couple of things on the horizon, the, I don't know that it'll necessarily affect my budget, but we're still waiting to see what happens with the SAVE Act. Um, right now, we have hundreds of voters register online or by mail every month, and if, if this, um, passes as written, then we'll have hundreds of people at our window every month, and we'll essentially be sort of like the registry. We're gonna have to be very careful with everyone's documentation. Um, it's, it's gonna be a lot more work, so we'll deal with it if we have to, when we have to, but that is on the horizon, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yep?
I don't, I just, um, just so that the council is aware, you also participate in filling out paperwork so that when appropriate, the state does reimburse you for certain election costs.
Yep.
And that money goes to the general fund, just so that everybody's aware.
Yeah, we had about twenty-nine thousand go to the general fund for the, uh, early voting costs associated with the state primary and the state election, and then we had nine thousand dollars in grant money for, um, uniform polling hours that came to my department, which helped offset the cost of the early voting workers and the, uh, election police and, and the polling places.
Excellent. And is the, the, the cost for police in, um, those details, is that included as part of this budget, or is that just?
It is. So that is, and it's a good part of the budget. Um, so, uh, we met with Deputy Cook last month, and he recommended eleven officers for details per election. Um, so it's, um, twenty-six thousand five nineteen for two elections, is what we're budgeting. And that's, you know, obviously increased with their pay increase over the last couple of years.
Oh, like, should the police have pulled, got it?
That reflects the July one, twenty-twenty-five rates.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you'll see the census has gone up as well, so we're expecting to send more forms, and then the postage is also gonna increase. Um, something I am looking at doing is, um, other municipalities have the capability of allowing, um, residents to respond to their census online if there's no changes, and, you know, in this day and age, most people prefer to do things online. Um, I've been looking into it, and, and it does, if we hired, um, the person who does it for other communities, it's like four thousand dollars a year. I'm not looking to spend any money. I talked to Dan in MIS, and he believes that we can create a form that we can use. So why this is important is if more people respond to the first census, there's fewer forms we have to send for the second mailing, and we just sent out thirteen thousand to people who didn't, households that didn't return their census form, so, uh, that's expensive. We just keep sending stuff out. We don't get it back. We have to keep sending it out because we're mandated by law, so.
So save the city money, get a library card. Outstanding. I don't have anything else.
No charge for overdue books. You should know.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Yeah, Julie, welcome. And, yeah, this is on page forty-six. Second. And whenever you're ready. You're welcome.
I will mention that fiscal year twenty-seven is going to be a full certification year of values, so we normally would wanna fund that the year before, so in fiscal year twenty-six. Mason, can you maybe speak to that a little bit? We pulled it out of the budget.
Yeah, so the, you know, the two hundred thousand's in there to denote that that's the expected cost of the reevaluate, the full reevaluation, which would be contracted for in fiscal twenty-six. The timing around that is probably, what, March, April, maybe February?
February, yeah.
So that's something that we'll look, it's, it's once every five years, that's something we'll look to, to fund through appropriation from free cash in the fall. It's not an annual recurring expense, so we'll look to, you know, use one of those one-time revenues this fall after free cash is certified. So it's something we have to do, we do need to contract for, but we're not looking to, the administration isn't recommending that we budget that two hundred thousand for, you know, an expense that I'd say is recurring, but every five years. And then additionally, we recommended to kind of take a similar approach with the interim, the appraisal services for the personal property.
Correct.
Was, the administration recommended, you know, that's something we've come to the council in the spring for, every year for, you know, funding from free cash, we're recommending, you know, due to kind of funding restraints, to do the same thing in fiscal year twenty-six. In an ideal world, at least the appraisal, annual appraisal services, I'd like to get onto the operating budget as part of the proposed budget. It's particularly difficult this year, so, you know, that's something we'll keep a close eye on if we can get there going forward, but we're kind of taking the same approach as the last few years.
And those were my two big questions. The, the two hundred K for the reeval, revaluation and the, was it, the appraisal service at the forty K?
It's important that they're at least in there and they're requested, so you kind of know what's, that they are needed and they are coming.
But they're not funded right now. So that's two hundred forty K roughly that, that we'll need to fund out of free cash. But the rationale behind it makes, makes sense, in my opinion, but I wanna make sure everyone sort of sees that and is aware of what's happening. And, we could talk later about debt service at a different time, but...
Debt service is on the count for next week.
Other questions?
I think the appraisal question is obviously the one question. The other thing, just so that you're aware, the account number structure for the revale will change. It will not be classified as a five-nine when the administration makes that two hundred thousand dollar request. It's sort of a holdover, and it keeps getting lost in different years, from many, many, many years ago, when there was actually an authorization to borrow in order to do a full tape and measure, which used to be done every ten years, and it was, as a percentage of the budget, was really large. And then this appraisal piece was to help offset on a debt entry, so the account number will change, but the concept is the same. There'll be a request for two hundred thousand dollars, or more, depending on what the estimates are. Hopefully less, but it could be more.
With that appraisal, I believe every year when we, or it's, this will be the third year in a row that we do this, I believe, we fund that.
The personal property appraisals?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we're budgeting, or it's written down for roughly forty thousand dollars, and the expectation is that, that more than that actually comes into the city in, in tax money and the personal property increases, is that correct?
Right, through the new growth, right?
I think last year was probably to the scale of ten X.
It was, yeah. We had about eight, yeah, eight hundred and seventy thousand in new growth from personal property, and we paid forty thousand for it, yeah.
So although I agree that because it's the third year in a row, it, it would have been nice to see it sort of budgeted, but I also understand and I'm okay with it not being there. Council Tavarez.
So just to follow up from Council Cobus's point there on the appraisal item. So is it, is it fair to say that moving forward, this will sort of be in the, the budget as a line item indefinitely as part of...
The, the goal for the appraisal services, and whether or not next year we get fifty percent of it upfront, or a hundred percent of it, the goal would bring, to be bringing that, bringing that onto the budget, because I think going forward, we're looking to do that on an annual recurring basis. The full reevaluation is every five years, so I do, it would not be the intention of the administration to budget two hundred thousand or plus dollars that we won't be using on an annual basis. So I think, I think I would probably, you know, five years from now, take a similar approach. It's, it's not a recurring cost, but the appraisal piece, I do think we, we'd like to get there as a piece of the budget, so fund it out of recurring revenues rather than free cash.
Any other questions? We're moving right along. Outstanding. Do you have any concerns or anything that jumps out at you?
I don't at the moment, no.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we're at the last one. Yeah, my department, and we are on page seventy. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here, folks. So, as usual, Vice President General, the, the budget for the Department of Planning and Development is in salaries. There's a modest decrease of about twenty thousand dollars in the salary line item from the previous year. That could be attributed to two variables, the first being the compensation plan that was adopted. But on the flip side, where it could have been a little bit more, is I lost a senior member of my staff for about twenty years, so the new staff member we hired was like grade one as opposed to on the top of the grade, so that kind of is sort of a push. So it's roughly about a, pardon me, about a twenty thousand dollar increase with respect to overtime. That again, that is for the, the planning administrator, that is strictly for attendance at evening meetings for the planning board and the, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Once again, a modest increase, and again, the increase would be reflective of a slight increase in the number of hours. What I do to calculate that figure is to go back about three to four years to see what the trend line is in the number of meetings. I project that forward compensated by the hourly rate of the, the employee's rate, and that's the number I came up with, sorry, it's about a, a five hundred dollar increase, probably running a surplus this year, because I've got, as you know, I've had a lot of change in, unfortunately, in the staff. So I've been through my second planning administrator this year, so as the, the player was there, there wasn't there, then I got a new one, I wasn't paying out the, the overtime something, I believe I have somewhat of a small surplus in that for this fiscal year. My longevity will be going down. Again, for the last several years, the longevity was for two employees, that would be for myself and the former senior land use planner, but I don't have anybody at that point in longevity, so the longevity line item is just for mine. The next line item, I'm dining comp plan. Again, I think that's an inclusion which we didn't have last year, and that's a result of the compensation plan that would result for any pay increase during the course of the year. Again, it is what it is, those are the numbers. So then you see the total number for my personnel services. The next line item, councilors, is the NIPDs, the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System. That project is now, has been for the last couple of years, but even though the Department of Planning and Development has been administering that program for over a decade, I believe about two or three years ago, on the recommendation of the city order that was taken from the mayor's budget line item, put in the department's line item. So this year's, yes, the, the contract is the amount before you write off, the five-three-zero-one-seven-three line item. The next one is staff development for fifteen hundred dollars. Again, those are just as potential workshops, seminars that come up during the course of the year. I like to keep myself, my staff, sharp, so I use that very, very frugally. In my humble opinion, I think fifteen hundred dollars is not an amount, but it goes a long way. We try to get free ones as much as we can, so, thank you.
And your new staff. And your new staff.
And I have the new staff as well, so I think fifteen hundred dollars would be fine. My office applies, level funded at seven hundred and fifty, and my membership is at, for the EPA, is at twelve hundred dollars, so...
And it looks like that wasn't used last year yet, or...
Well, it will be, because the way my membership runs, it's almost toward the end of the fiscal year, so I don't wanna renew it too early, and I will tell you, I think it just ran out in April, so I gotta hurry up and renew it up again. So I will, I will spend that money, but again, it runs out toward the end of the fiscal year. So you'll always see that there, I think, because of the way it runs, Council Cobus.
And then just a, a point of clarification on the comp plan line, that everyone is gonna see, you're gonna see across a bunch of departments, it's a good opportunity to mention what it is. So as discussed in the compensation plan, there's now an opportunity for those non-represented employees to receive a, you know, a one-time incentive payment for extraordinary performance in the city and extraordinary work. So budgeted in the departments that have impacted employees and employees that would be eligible after one year in that new plan, that's sort of the maximum amount, because it's up to two percent of their prior salary, so that's the maximum amount, and that's in, within the departments where those folks are eligible. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna be due to an employee, right? This is, you know, subject to that sort of, that review of performance process, and that's, but we are budgeting those upfront, and I believe across the general government budget right now, it's about eighty-eight thousand dollars. So just for your edification, it's about eighty-eight thousand across the overall budget in FY twenty-six, and, you know, again, that impacts a lot of departments, but it may or may not be paid out, it's subject to that process.
Council Cobus, one other item, I wanna bring to your attention, earlier when I spoke about the delta in the salary line item, I mentioned the two variables, where again, the loss of one senior staff member and the implementation of the compensation plan. The other one I wanna bring to the council's attention is the salary of the Assistant Conservation Agent. So as you know, fairly recently, we increased that from a part-time position to a full-time position, and at that time, when we moved into the full-time position, fifty percent of that position's salary was picked up by the city, fifty percent was picked up by the Conservation Commission, two buckets of money. The two-five-oh-five account, which is the notice of intent bucket, and the other one was the local wetlands protection ordinance. So twenty-five percent of each one made fifty percent with the fifty percent from the city. This year, I wanna bring to your attention that the split's gonna be seventy-five percent, or the proposal is seventy-five percent to be picked up by the, the city and twenty-five percent from the Conservation Commission. Again, the twenty-five percent that would be split, twelve and a half percent and twelve and a half percent, half if you buy the two-five-oh-five account and the two-five-oh-nine account. I actually submitted the memorandum to the commission for last night's meeting. It will be a, for, up for a vote during their June fourth meeting, and I'd like to think that that'll be in place, so by the time this budget gets approved, those funds will be in place. I will write a letter to the order to transfer the funds, and we can hit the ground running on July first. But I just wanna bring to your attention, that's fifty-fifty split would now be respectfully seventy-five, twenty-five.
And I think of that twenty-five, it's probably closer to ten percent local wetlands, fifteen percent notice of intent. Remember, we, one of your accounts has more revenues that come in than the others, so I don't, it's not a, it's not a, of that twenty-five percent, it's not a fifty-fifty split between those accounts, it's, we're monitoring what kind of revenues come in, what, you know, and the expenses there. But that twenty-five percent of the salary will be funded, you know, would be funded pending the CONCOM approval and pending the council approval of the budget from those two accounts. Ultimately, fifty-fifty would not be sustainable for those, those two accounts, right, between notice of intent and local wetlands, and so one of the things we talked about last year before the council was that, you know, likely in twenty-six, you would see a larger shift to the general fund, and this is a reflection of that. We probably have the ability to do twenty-five percent for, twenty-five percent for maybe one more year, so you'll probably see a similar additional shift, kind of incrementally bringing that position onto the general fund over the next couple of years, probably to the point where it's at a hundred.
Perfect. Council Fola.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is properly directed to you or not. I keep reading about changing standards for things for which NEPTEs permits are required, and I'm just wondering how that affects you. Is it getting easier to get, is there less monitoring that is going to be required going forward? Do you have any sense of how EPA's change in its regulatory environment is gonna affect us?
So if you're talking about what's going on at the federal government at this point, I haven't received any notification whatsoever, oddly enough. We had received notification about the community development block grant, we received notification about, of some federal granting. We have not received anything regarding NEPTEs moving forward from EPA or directly from the federal government. So we're marching forward with the requirements, and that's why that line item is there, is moving forward with the operation and maintenance plan that we've been monitoring for the last several years until we hear otherwise.
I'll forward my New York Times to you, so you can have...
Pardon me?
I'll forward my New York Times to you, so you can have a...
Okay.
A heads up, you know. But again, you...
Actually, I had Vice President Dolan first.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have a specific question, more of a comment. I was really disappointed to see that you won't be getting an additional position in your department, which is so desperately needed, and I really hope that, you know, as stated here, that that will be top priority come the finalization of new growth, because I, I know myself, and I'm sure everybody here sees how much work you do, and how long you're here in your department, and how hard you all work, and so I really, really, really hope that this is gonna be the top priority, because you, you all deserve it, you need the help, you, you can't, I don't know how it's sustainable, I don't know how you do what you do.
So first of all, sincerely, I appreciate that comment, that it's recognized, but out of fairness to the mayor as well, when I read her looking ahead in the budget, she does mention here, again, it says potential creation, but the succession of staff resilience, and she calls out three possible positions, one of those, it doesn't include my office, so I was, we've had conversations, of course, and I was very, very pleased to see that in the mayor's, my election to the city council, but I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, and I mean, and that wasn't necessarily a dig to the administration, it was just, I just wanted to let you know that we all see how much work your department does, and how long you're here in everything that you do, and that if anybody needs an additional staff member, it's you.
Thank you. I just wanna comment, piggyback on a comment you made earlier when the chief assessor was here, Ms. Hobson, you talked about going digital. So among the various projects that we've outlined for accomplishments in FY twenty-five, and what we're looking forward to accomplish in FY twenty-six has to do with digitization, and so we are in the midst of digitizing all of the documents in the planning department, planning board, zoning board, CONCOM, any of the other documents that are more project-related. And the next step after that, and that was based on a grant that actually made these most secure, was a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, that once that's accomplished, and I think that's probably gonna get finished a little sooner or later, but roughly around September of twenty-twenty-five, the next step after that, it is my hope, if not by the end of this calendar year, but hopefully by spring of twenty-twenty-six, that we go digital with all filings. Planning board, zoning board, CONCOM, I mean, there's a lot of bugs you gotta work out and everything, so, again, I say that... and she calls out three possible positions, one of those, it doesn't include my office, so I was, we've had conversations, of course, and I was very, very pleased to see that in the mayor's, my election to the city council, but I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, and I mean, and that wasn't necessarily a dig to the administration, it was just, I just wanted to let you know that we all see how much work your department does and how long you're here and everything that you do, and that if anybody needs an additional staff member, it's you.
Thank you. I just want to comment, piggyback on a comment you made earlier when the chief assessor was here, Ms. Hobson, you talked about going digital. So among the various projects that we've outlined for accomplishments in FY '25, and what we're looking forward to accomplish in FY '26 has to do with digitization, and so we are in the midst of digitizing all of the documents in the planning department, planning board, zoning board, CONCOM, any of the other documents that are more project-related. And the next step after that, and that was based on a grant that actually made these most secure, it was a $150,000 grant, that once that's accomplished, and I think that's probably going to get finished a little sooner or later, but roughly around September of 2025, the next step after that, it is my hope, if not by the end of this calendar year, but hopefully by spring of 2026, that we go digital with all filings. Planning board, zoning board, CONCOM, I mean, there's a lot of budgets you've got to work out and everything, so again, I say that only because that could impact the public very immediately. There's a lot of things we work on that impact the public, of course, but it's just, you raised the question of going digital, and I'm not, I thought I would just bring that up, so that's my next step of after getting everything digitized and then catapult forward to going digital with all application filings.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Because I know Council Dolan is always interested in the street acceptances, you did mention sort of a goal to move forward with continuing to accept.
Absolutely.
Street acceptances. Do we know how many are left? I know there was a huge backlog, we just accepted that.
Yeah, my new senior latest planner, Anna, is on top of that. The mayor is always on top of the ones again, so she's on it. The former planner had started it, the former senior latest planner, and again, I guess, again, it's not an excuse, it's a reason, I had a gap of time. So I had to bring the new staff on board, I had to train her, and one of the core fundamentals of my department is, every time I bring new staff on, that it is absolutely imperative to make sure that they are immersed in and become experts as quickly as possible, the administration of the planning board, zoning board, and conservation commission, for a variety of reasons, type sensitivity and legal implications. So I'm trying to train my new staff very much to get that going, and as, as they're getting traction, and it's really, really great, they are getting very good traction, I get some really good staff. Anna received her master's degree in city planning from, I think, USC, I think, but I know it was California State, I think it's USC, it could be UCLA. Very smart, very intelligent, grasped very quickly. Now I'm winning her off on bringing other projects. One of them was sitting down with Mike Tyler and getting down the forms so that she could upload all those streets. The former planner had already started that, but like I said, I hit the gap, and now Anna's picking that up, and it should be done actually in a couple of weeks. And then that would, of course, increase the chapter 90 funds. And aside from that, Council, the mayor has asked me before too, Gary, is there anything else out there, streetwise, that we missed? Look, I can't tell you 100% no, you never know something, it always can crop up that we just happened to miss, but between what the council did back in 1994, that en masse street acceptance, and what we just did recently through that special legislation, I think we captured them all, but something like, it's a wackadoo, something like Riva said, aside from that, all the other subdivisions, as they get approved, as we do the final release, and we just do street acceptance, we bring it right to the council. So you might not have seen any recently, that's because the construction is still ongoing. So as they're done, we make sure we will process those and bring you to the council.
Perfect. Council Holmes?
Thank you. You had mentioned that you did hear about the community block grant, that you heard something about that changing, is that accurate?
Yeah, and more, more at the federal level, our CD rep at the federal level, the local rep, we got to know when she resigned, and we didn't know, my staff didn't know, so we kind of speculated. So we understand there could be, there's some turnover going on, but in terms of the amount that we received, nothing has changed. It's just I hear some rumblings at the federal level of, and we hear a lot of, for example, another one is a BRIC grant, the downtown flood mitigation project we're working on. The grant we have right now is safe, but we've already been alerted. The next grant that we had already applied for, we did what's called an expression of interest. You file the expression of interest, they evaluate it, they'll come back with some questions, and after they give you the questions, then they'll invite you back to do a full application. That's all off the board. Staff is off the board. MEMA and FEMA staff is off the board, and it was unfortunate, thought this of all my colleagues at a virtual meeting, it was like, best of luck to you, so. So again, nothing has touched the block grant, Council Holmes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council Tavoris.
So just a question on the available budget for '25 under salary and wages, obviously we've been talking about shortage of staff. What percentage if?
Could you say 25 or 26?
I'm sorry, 25. Did I say 25?
Yeah, you did say 25.
Oh, okay. What percentage do you anticipate being unused, and if there is a percentage?
When we looked at it yesterday, probably around 10%.
Okay. What happens with that?
In the 40,000 range. So it's a good question, so it's what we kind of refer to as turnbacks, right? Some might say surplus, but turnbacks, that falls, those net of other, you know, liabilities or outstanding receivables, that, that falls into your free cash number. So that's kind of where a big piece of our free cash number in the fall is turnbacks from every department, as well as, you know, in the last, last couple of years, a big, one of the biggest turnbacks has actually been the difference, and we talked about this, the difference between the, like, charter school assessments and the actual amount that they billed us. So those, those turnbacks really make up the biggest portion of our, of our free cash.
Oh, sorry.
It's more of a comment, so thank you. I want to really kind of build off of what Vice President Dolan was saying. I think one thing that a lot of people, we see Gary here almost every night, every meeting we're here, what we don't see is on the weekends, when I know for a fact he's been out at a residence house in a cold October rain, helping that individual that's still ongoing six months later. I think, Gary, that assistant planner position is extremely important, it's one that I'll be advocating pretty hard for over the rest of this term at least.
Thank you, Council, President, I appreciate that, sir.
I appreciate the work you did. I've been going out and meeting with the resident, dealing with a quality of life issue, and I know that's just one of countless numbers, so thank you.
And as you know, because I keep in touch with you, can't do this unacceptably to me, so.
Right, right. There is no no.
That's right, sir. There's always a way to figure it out, especially when it comes to engineering, so.
And I, I remember those first budgets we reviewed with, with the office supplies line at $50 back then, a while ago, it was, yeah. Yeah, we, we know you run a tight ship over there, and definitely appreciate everything you do.
Appreciate that, Council.
Any other comments? Deb, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I can only echo what some of the councilors have. I've, I've been here a long time. Gary is the only person I'm aware of in the building that's been in this building longer than I have, and I know how much the loss of one 20-year employee has impacted my office this year, and how much extra work that is, and how much more that is. I can't imagine losing the number of people in one year that Gary has. The endless hours before losing his staff has probably been a lot this year, I imagine has been particularly challenging, and my concern for the city, which I, I've sat here over the years more than once and heard, you know, succession planning, and I know that they, this administration, previous administrations, we all try and do our part, but as some of us are getting closer and closer to, or the turnover is happening more and more in the city, it's really something that we need to consider to build the bench, because if we don't, as a city, I'm fearful for the impact to the city as a whole and to the residents. And I think there's going to be some tough and difficult conversations ahead as it relates to federal and state funding, too, because with changes at the federal level and what are coming from the state level, I don't know, and I think the questions asked about, you know, CDBG funding and other grants, I was unaware of till you just shared with us about the BRIC, you know, that certain grants being at risk. So I don't know what that means for us as a community, but certainly having a bench to go to for our employees. I know that you've had to make some difficult decisions in the budget, and you hear throughout the sentiment, you know, we had to, due to constraints, we chose not to do X with the appraisals, right? But, you know, it's, it's very easy to govern when there's lots of money and very difficult to govern when there's not, and I, I'm afraid that this year is a challenge, and there's probably challenges in the years short-term to come, so I just think that it's been a good discussion, and thank you. I will not be here next Thursday at that meeting, so I'll send you some notes that I have, as we've talked about.
So Debbie mentioned BRIC, and I think, I'm glad she did, I want to circle back to that very, very quickly. So we received a $187,000 BRIC. The city put up about $33,000 toward, a little more than that, I think around about a quarter of a million dollar project. I said to you, the next phase of that, it's wiped out, your concern would be, what did we pay for, what are we going to get if there's no? So I know you didn't ask, I'm sure that's in the back of your mind, so I think what I'd rather do is explicitly bring that up, because it's a valid point. BRIC has been shut down, I've already got Nick searching for other grants so that we can do the second phase of this, so I wanted to set your heart, mind at ease at that, and we will be back to you. Typically, they require a cash match, it is what it is, but thank you for reiterating that BRIC comment, so while the next phase of BRIC will be through the BRIC program, there's one already that comes to mind is FMA, that there's another one that Nick is looking forward to be the second step to the BRIC.
President Delicia.
Kind of a follow-up comment to City Auditor and City Planner, I think as we go along in this process, and we've talked about this various times over the years, what always concerns me is grants, and especially relating to salaries that are funded by grants, and I think that that's always a challenge, you never know, here one day, gone the next, you know, I'm sorry I was late, I wanted to ask Kelly Fox about that, especially relating to Shine, so I think that these are the type of things that we just have to pay attention when we're talking about salary sheets and looking at salaries and seeing what the potential impact of any kind of cut could be.
I don't have any more questions for, for you, Gary. What's, did you have any?
I leave it up to the council for questions on any of the things we talked about tonight. Obviously, I know the plan is to go big picture, full budget presentation on the public hearing on June 3rd for both general government, we get into weeds on water, meat squad, or everything that's before us, but if there's other questions right now, I'm happy to respond.
And specifically, one of the things I'd like to encourage the council to do is, if you have questions for Mason, especially, or, or questions you expect to ask during the, the public hearing that you would like for him to address during the public hearing, please get those questions to Mason so that he can sort of prepare a little bit, that would be.
Yeah, anything over the, anything over the next week would be great, so happy to prepare whatever's, you know, needed.
Just so everyone else is aware of the schedule on, so we won't have people before us on Tuesday next week, but our next meeting for, to meet with department heads is on Thursday, May 29th at 7:00 PM. Any other questions before we adjourn? Hearing none, I move to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 8:30. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Gary.